Well, welcome everybody to the 2020 Carpinteria City Council Candidates Forum. I'm your host Larry Nimmer. We're sponsored by the Alcazar Theater and you'll find us live on their Facebook page. And we'll also remain, this video will remain on their page to watch afterwards. Let's make sure we have a good connection. Turn on your mics, everybody, and I'll start with Natalia. Natalia Alarcon, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Hi.
And maybe you'll need to be a little bit louder. I don't know if you can get a little closer, just speak up a little bit, but I'll compare your audio to everybody else. Next up, Mark McIntyre, are you there?
Good evening, Larry.
Okay, I think I-
Wade, Natalia.
Nice to see you, Mark. And your audio level was the same as Natalia's, that's good. And Wade, are you there? Can you hear me?
I can hear you fine, thank you very much. Welcome, everybody, to the Alcazar.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I now hear everybody. We'll have opening statements from all of you in just a moment. And I want to make a few notes. During the forum, viewers can post their questions for the candidates on the Facebook Live page. Some of these questions will be used later in the forum. And after the forum, we encourage the candidates to look at the questions and they can answer individually on the Facebook site afterwards if they want to. We expect the forum to be 60 to 90 minutes long. Towards the end of the forum, we'll also point, post a link under comments to be able to join the Zoom session to ask questions live. So you'll see that later in the comment section. And if you do, make sure your question's not longer than 10 seconds. I have the timekeeper is Tara O'Reilly. Tara, do you want to lean in? She's our retired librarian and my wife, and she'll put a paddle up when there's 15 seconds left. So when there's 15 seconds left, that will appear on my screen. And then when you need to stop, there's another paddle. That will be the stop signal. And I have the, you know, if you go on talking, I'm able to mute you. These are the segments for the forum. There'll be opening statements, then there'll be questions, then there'll be a show and tell segment, followed by a general discussion. Then you'll answer questions from the Facebook Live viewers, and then also some live Zoom questions. And finally, there'll be closing statements. Okay, let's begin now. We'll start off in alphabetical order and then we'll switch the order each time. Natalia Alarcon is the first in alphabetical order and you'll have 90, let's see, you'll have your opening questions, opening statement, two minutes, sorry about that. Natalia, nice to see you. Why don't you go ahead?
Perfect. Well, first of all, I'd like to say thank you to you, Larry, and the Alcazar Theater for having this forum available to our community. So as mentioned, my name is Natalia Alarcon, and I believe that my unique experience as a bilingual licensed marriage and family therapist, a nonprofit professional, has taught me to listen and to work collaboratively to create meaningful and lasting change. The desire to be a part of something bigger has always been a part of me, and I attribute that to my parents. They moved to the United States from Chile for better opportunities and a brighter future. Carpinteria has not only been my hometown for the last 26 years, but it's where I've grown up, both literally and figuratively. I earned my bachelor's degree at UCSB, and I've also learned my master's degree in clinical psychology at Antioch University. The skills and opportunities I've gained have led me to get back to the community I call home. As an active board member of Parents for Eliso, I've been able to strengthen parent participation and raise funding for enrichment activities. As a board member with the Rental Housing Mediation Program, I've stayed connected to the issues pertaining to housing in the Carpinteria community. I've worked in the nonprofit sector for the past 10 years, providing direct administrative oversight to programs that have a significant impact on residents' most basic needs. I understand firsthand what it means to overcome barriers in this community in Carpinteria. And as a Latinx woman who's passionate about Carpinteria and its residents, I plan on bringing new ideas and solutions to our current issues. So, hola, mi nombre es Natalia Alarcón y me postulo para el Ayuntamiento de Carpintería. Mi experiencia como terapeuta y como una profesional me ha enseñado cómo escuchar y trabajar y colaborar con mucha gente en la comunidad. He vivido en carpintería por los últimos 26 años y he trabajado en el sector sin fines de lucro durante los últimos 10 años, brindando supervisión directa y administrativa a programas que tienen un impacto positivo en las necesidades más básicas de los residentes en nuestra comunidad. Gracias.
Well, thank you very much, Natalia. Perfect timing. I'm getting a couple of comments that it's a little hard to hear you, so I suggest viewers either turn up your volume and/or Natalia and Mark be possibly closer to the microphone that you're recording on. Wade seemed to be loud enough. And now, let's see, our second candidate, you'll have two minutes, and it's Mark McGuire. Go ahead.
Actually, it's Mark McIntyre, it's not Mark McGuire.
I'm sorry about that. Mark McIntyre.
Thank you, Larry, and good evening, Wade, and good evening, Natalia. I'm looking forward to really enjoying this exchange of ideas. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for tuning in. Hola, Las Tomas y Caballeros. My name is Mark McIntyre, and here's why I'm running. I'm running to protect we the people against some of the unpopular special interest programs, like the hotel at the train station that will impact citizens for decades. I'm also running to protect we the people against the under-regulated cannabis production here in Carpinteria that literally stinks high to heaven. I run to protect from crimes of robbery, vandalism, and drugs being sold to children. I run to provide broadband 5G upgrades for all students, all parents, all businesses here in Carpinteria. I run to make decisions for all Carpinteria residents without specializing in aggravated tribes, clamoring groups, or special ethnicities. Why am I qualified to run for this position and be elected? In 1982, I was elected to the National Screen Actors Guild Board of Directors, and there I learned, as Ronald Reagan did, the politics of glamour and how to make decisions that affect all members equally. For 23 years, I also taught critical thinking and writing in the philosophy department at Santa Barbara City College. So I know how to balance opposing views and ideas for the common good. As a mentor and a tutor for partisan education here in Carpinteria at the middle school and the high school, I've successfully helped hundreds, hundreds of students into first grade, first-class colleges and universities. My TV SV interview program, Freedom Matters, has influenced thousands of viewers with insights of writers, politicians, professors, and entrepreneurs to be continued.
Okay, well, thank you. And now we have Wade Nomura. Go ahead with your two-minute opening statement.
Great, thank you, Larry, and thank you, everybody that's watching this. My name is Wade Nomura. I'm currently serving as the mayor of the city of Carpinteria. I came here, moved here in 1977. I fell in love with Carpinteria, consider this my home. And when we look around at all the things that happened, I also consider this my paradise. I think in order to protect that, it's important to realize that we have to invest in that also. So my lifetime here in Carpinteria, I have put a lot of time and effort in. I spent 25 years with the city, 17-plus of that was with the Carpinteria Architecture Review Board, and then the last eight years with the city council. I feel it's important that we, as members and people of this community, put our time and invest in what makes it better for Carpinteria. My work is to make sure that Carpinteria stays the way it is, and it grows in a direction that we, as Carpinterians, would respect and admire. This is the most important part. I travel around the world. I am also bilingual in Spanish. I spend probably two, three months of the year in Mexico doing humanitarian projects. And I think it's important that when I come back, I realize that it's Carpinteria that is my home. There's no place else like this anywhere in the world. And because of that, it's, I feel, my duty to make sure that I put in the time to keep Carpinteria the way it is. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Wade. Okay, now we will ask you questions. The questions have come in from the Alcazar Board of Directors, the community, through the Coastal New News and other sources. The candidates were not given the questions ahead of time. Remember, you can also post your questions online. I see some of them, some have started already. And we will go to, let's see, Mark McIntyre, sorry, I mispronounced your name. Mark McIntyre will start first. And the question for you, Mark, is what is good about Carpinteria? And what things need to be changed? And this will be for all of you. Start with Mark.
Thank you very much, Larry, and thank you very much who asked the question. The things that are great about Carpinteria, of course, we can't be greater, but the things that are great is that we do have a small community, an intimate community of people who know each other. When you walk down the street and you know people, they greet you and you see them regularly. It's also a safe community, relatively. It is alarming that some of the agribusiness that we have brought to our community is attracting criminals. And there is an ongoing concern about drug problems. But, and I am a little bit alarmed about the literacy rates in schools, below percentiles in both reading and mathematics. These are some things that I'm concerned about. But overall, it's a great place to raise a family. It's a wonderful place to raise a family, as both of my rivals will probably attest. So what can make it better? Okay, what can make it better is we're sort of isolated here inside of the Santa Barbara County bubble. And we're next door to a larger city, and we can develop some things here in Carpinteria that don't exist elsewhere. One of my pet projects is going to be promoting 5G broadband technology for all citizens. We're profiting everyone in the community. That's how we, that's one thing. We'll talk about this later.
Okay, very good. Next, we'll ask Wade Nomura the same question, which is what's good about Carpinteria? And what things need to be changed? Go ahead, Wade. Wade, you're still muted. Let me get your, yeah, there you go, Wade, you were muted. And let's start the timer over and go ahead.
Good question. Thank you very much for the question and letting us share on what we believe in. What's good about Carpinteria? Pretty much everything. I love the city. What's really, I think, unique about the city of Carpinteria is the ability of a city this size, 14,000 people, that are able to put their voice out and their voice is heard. It could be an individual voice, but each of those individual voices are heard within the city. I think that's outstanding. We have a small-town charm that's like no other place in the world. The changes that I think we have to take a look at and address, first of all, is the economy. We are facing right now the pandemic issues, the crisis of that, and what it's done to our economy. So we will be having to rebuild that one. Housing is another big issue. Many of the people that born and raised here can't stay here, only because of the cost of housing. So we have to take a look at that also. Too many people in Carpinteria are not able to stay here. So I think that's an important thing we have to look at. We have to also take a look at responsible growth. Carpinteria only has a footprint of two and a half square miles, and most of the area is now built out. However, we are still meeting, needing to meet the requirements of the state. And as we move forward with that, we have to take a look at responsible growth. This is something that's important for all of us, especially in city council. So those are my points. Thank you very much, Larry.
Okay, thank you, Wade. Now we have Natalia Alarcon, same question. What's good about Carpinteria and what things need to be changed?
Hold on a second. We're getting lots of comments if the volume is really low.
Okay, so Natalia, before we start with you, can you count to five?
One, two, three, four, five.
I think that that volume is better. Does anybody want to respond to that? Okay, well, just to remind-
To the highest on my end.
Okay, you have it at the highest. Okay, very good. And a reminder to viewers, if it's not loud enough, turn up the volume on your player. And so Natalia, what's good about Carpinteria and what things should be changed?
Yeah, so Carpinteria has amazing aspects and qualities. First and foremost, we have the ability to have a small-town charm, which I don't know that I appreciated that as much when I was younger as I do now, now that I have my family and I'm raising my children here. When we're talking about things that can change, there's things that we absolutely need to look at. And one of those is affordable housing, because as Wade mentioned, there's too many families similar to mine that are having to relocate out of this community because they can no longer afford to live here. The other thing that we need to continue to look at is the economic vitality piece and where Carpinteria is and where we're going to be in the future.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's see, now we're going to go on to that, our next question. You've all three had an opportunity for that one. The next question is, what policies of the city council have you agreed with and what have you disagreed with? And we'll start with Wade Nomura. What policies have you agreed with and what have you disagreed with, if any?
That's a good question. Thank you very much. And I'm glad you included the "if any." A lot of the most recent policies that we put together and put in place is reaction to either the pandemic or the disaster that we had with the Thomas Fire and subsequent debris flows. So everything was moved forward with that in the ability of the city to be able to recover a lot quicker for that one. We also have been moving forward with those things in the environment. So we looked at the banning of plastic bags, styrofoam, things like that. So we are cutting edge. We are one of the leading cities in the country, looking at environmental issues. So I think that is also an important one. What policies and issues did I not agree with? I'm glad you put that up there, because really, I haven't seen too many. Most of the policies that have come forward have benefited the people. If it's something that would have come forward, a policy that I did not agree with, I would have not agreed with that because it would have not benefited the city itself or the community. I have not seen one of those, and everything that's moved forward has moved forward smoothly through the city council. Thanks for the question.
Thank you, Wade. Let's go next to Natalia. And by the way, I've gotten some notes from viewers that I should mute my mic, and the others of you can mute it when you're not talking. It might be the ambient audio that's causing a problem. Let's see, now, let's start now. Next question. I'm sorry, we, that was Wade. Okay. Now we have Natalia Alarcon, same question. What policies of the city council have you agreed with and what have you disagreed with?
Perfect. So what I'm thinking most recently, I agreed, I absolutely agreed, and I'm in favor of the most recent policy with the Resolution 5981 on racial equity and social justice. I think that's incredibly important for our community. In terms of policies that I do not agree with, I think the only thing that comes to mind, especially since we're living in the pandemic, and this is all learning curve for everyone. I'd love to have seen some of those policies roll out sooner. But like I said, this is a learning curve, and this is something that I believe that the city will learn from and probably move things quicker should this happen again in the future, or should there be another wave of the pandemic coming through?
By the way, if you can't hear me, candidates, you can go like this. I had myself muted. And now, Mark McIntyre, why don't you answer the question, what policies have you agreed with and what do you disagree with?
Well, I think that overall, I like to say that I have found that the city council has been drifting towards special interests. A most recent example was the whole Sea Dogs proposal to create off-leash dog runs in three parks. The original staff workup budget was over a million dollars for all three. But after some dialogue, the city council, I think they got it right. I think they got it right. They, Roy Lee made a motion, and it was unanimously accepted, I believe, to go for an experimental trial for just one park, El Coro, and then see how that goes. And certainly at a much less price tag than we were doing. But overall, I see the council, this is what I disagree with the council, is that they seem to listen to the loudest voice that clamors last, and then they try to appease that. And in certain areas, I don't think that they really belong, it's not the business of the city council, to take up certain issues. For instance, I am opposed to that ethnic equality, equity. I saw how that destroyed Santa Barbara City College. It's destroying our school system. It's destroying our employee, business relationships. So we'll get on to that later.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Mark, okay, you're, Mark, I think you accidentally got muted at the end. Are you there?
Oh, I am here. I think you got muted.
I think, I think so. Can you finish your last thought, Mark?
Only that we'll get into some of these details where I disagree, probably in later questions. I don't want to take up any more time.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, next question. We're going to start with Natalia. And the question is, what are your thoughts regarding the best use of the Bluffs property at the east end of Carpinteria? And, and the church property on Villarreal, two places that could or could not be developed? We'll start with Natalia. And you'll need to unmute yourself. Okay, now I hear you. Go ahead, Natalia.
Perfect. So you, thoughts regarding two different properties, one on the Bluffs on the east end, you mentioned? Okay, so I think when it comes to the properties that we have in our community, as Wade mentioned, there's only so much more that we can develop. And so there are certain factors that we need to take into consideration when it comes to either developing affordable housing or do we want to develop another hotel, or do we want to keep our open spaces open? And so what I would do in order to ensure that we're making the right decision is that we really need to look into what those properties, the scale of those properties, how large those properties are, and really look towards our experts within the city to see what we can do to move, to move forward, what the next would pop, next steps would be.
Very good. Now we're going to go to Mark McIntyre. What are your thoughts about, let me read it the way it is. What are your thoughts regarding the best use of the Bluffs property at the east end of town and the church property on Villarreal?
Yeah, thanks, Larry. These are two very different properties that are in consideration for development. As I contact over 600 people this last two weeks knocking on doors, I find that people just say to me, "I don't want any more development, period. I do not want development." When you get on city council, stop them from developing things. Or if they're going to develop it, please let us know and put it on referendum. These are very sensitive issues, especially the Bluffs property. That's a jewel. That took many, many years of collaborative and cooperative work to get that approved by Santa Barbara, the Coastal Commission, the county, and Carpinteria. So I would just say that I would, I would not touch the Bluffs property, except expand it where we can reasonably without infringing the private property. With the church property, I'd have to look at some proposals for that, and I think those proposals should be put out for rush.
Thank you, Mark. Now we're going to go to Wade about what are your thoughts about the Bluffs property on the east end of town and the church on Villarreal?
Great, thank you, Larry. Again, excellent question. The Bluffs property and the Villarreal church property both have been looked at in consideration for development over the years. Again, I've been looking at these development proposals for the last 25 years. And as we've seen, so far, nothing has come forward that has even come close to what the city has wanted or needs. There is a definite need currently for housing. That's something that we have to take a look at. Since we are running out of that area, that's someplace that we could possibly do that. However, even though it's something that I could see as a potential, it's going to be up to the city and the citizens of Carpinteria to make the ultimate decision on what that's going to be. It's out of my hands until a developer comes forward and we give it the full review process to see what the people want. So that's what I have right now currently. One is a driving range. We have a lot of people using that. It's excellent for outdoor activity. It works well. It's not costing us anything. It's a benefit to the community. The church property, we had some hotels come through there. They've gone, so we gotta just wait and see. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Wade. Now, our next question that came in is, what are your three favorite places in Carp to spend your, to spend your leisure time? Your three favorite places in Carpinteria to spend your leisure time? First, we'll have Mark McIntyre.
Well, that's a great question. I'm sure people are going to have a lot of different diverse answers to this one. My favorite place is right down the street. It's Monte Vista Park. I walk around that park every morning at about 6 o'clock in the morning. It gives me a great opportunity to reflect, to meditate, and to formulate what I'm going to be doing for the day, what problems I'm going to be considering, and what, what activities I'm going to be doing. The second, the second place, of course, has to be the ocean, not just the beaches, not just the beaches, but the overlooks that parallel the training tracks. And my third, third place is the rookery, where you can actually hear the seals and with their calls to their pups. And I actually, if I open my window here right next to me, I can hear them as I fall asleep. So I guess my third place would be lying in bed, listening to the seals here in Carpinteria. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Wade Nomura. What are three of your favorite places to spend your leisure time?
Leisure time, fortunately, I've had some now that I'm traveling less, so it's good to be home. The leisure time itself, one of the less leisure times is spending time at home, because my wife, she definitely cracks the whip. So I do sneak out as often as I can to try and do, get away from the honey-do things, which is a good thing. The Bluffs, the Bluffs Preserve is one area that's going to be outstanding. They're going to be developing that, putting pathways in, walkways. We have the bike path that's coming through. There's the current bike path that goes through, through the state beach, all the way down throughout the park, all the way down to the regular beach park. So we've created quite a few outdoor living areas. The downtown area, Linden and the T, Carpinteria Avenue, now is considered a walking pedestrian-friendly area. So again, we've opened this up to make sure that we, as Carpinterians, can enjoy the outdoors, no matter where we go. We have it here, and this is in a very small footprint that we have, that we've been able to retain these jewels and gems. Thank you, Larry. Good question.
Okay, thank you. Natalia, what are three of your favorite places to spend your leisure time?
Well, one of the things I absolutely love to do is go to our beach, our local beaches. I think they're incredibly clean and incredibly beautiful, and we're always able to run into other community members at the beach. The other place I love and I enjoy is Franklin Trail. We're very lucky to be able to have that trail and those miles to hike up and down. And then last but not least, I love the Bluffs and walking through the Bluffs with my family.
Okay, very nice. Let's see, reminder to viewers, you can write your questions in the, in the comment section, and we'll ask candidates questions that you pose. Let's see, reminder to turn up the volume when the other candidates are speaking if you can't hear a candidate loudly. The next question we're going to ask is, we're going to ask one more question, and then we're going to go to a different segment and then come back to the questions. What's your vision for the future of Carpinteria? It's hard to keep a small town quaint and charming. What's your vision for the future? Would you like to see more development, more growth, more infrastructure? And we'll start with Wade. Stand by, Wade. Mute myself.
Okay, I think you said go ahead. I'm reading lips right here. Thank you there, Larry. The vision that I see of Carpinteria, we are going to be facing some challenging times moving forward. Again, we talked about the economy, but we are also looking at sea level rise and a lot of things that are going to happen in conjunction with that. It's going to shrink the footprint of the city. Do I see us going into large development or changing? No. My hopes are that we remain the small, charming town within, on the city, on the front of the beach. I think that's our number one amenity. That's the greatest thing we have. It's our greatest treasure that we have. So my idea is to protect that. I think we have to take a look at also what's going to benefit the community as far as having people, giving them the ability to stay here. And that's where we talk about equity, equity and inclusion that way, because we need to make sure that we have a balance of all people, of all races, and of all economic groups to make sure that we stay viable as the community we are right now. Community is very unique, and that's what makes it that way. Thank you, Larry.
Okay, thank you, Wade. Next, Natalia, same question. How do you see the future?
So the future of Carpinteria, I think that, just similar to Wade, in terms of keeping our small-town charm and our small-town feel, I think that makes Carpinteria unique, and that's why so many people want to stay in Carpinteria. I do think, though, we need to look at affordable housing solutions, and so looking at ADUs, accessory dwelling units, and what that could do to increase the quality of life for a lot of our multi-generational families living in single-family homes. And so that's something that I would absolutely like to explore. But for the most part, it's keeping Carpinteria- But for the most part, it's keeping Carpenteria Carpenteria. And, and I would actually add to that, the importance of recovery of this pandemic. It's gonna take a little bit to recover, and so continuing to help our business survive and thrive.
You muted there, Larry.
Thanks for the reminder, Wade. Mark McIntyre, go ahead, same question.
Yes, thank you very much, Larry. Yeah, I don't see this future issue as necessarily a either/or. I always look for both and solutions in life, and I found that both and solutions are much better than either or solution. So I believe that we can have development and technology. We have Procore here, we have lydia.com. We, we have other small, growing businesses. And I think one of the ways we can do this is to expand and upgrade our technology. That's why I'm pushing for 5G fiber optic tower here in Carpenteria that will, if you don't like your, the bands on your cell phone, if you don't like the drops in your video on Zoom and the audio failures on Zoom that we've even experienced on this program and on city council, then, then we can develop technology, not necessarily building. I don't think building is the, is the answer to us. I would hate to see, for instance, Carpenteria a housing authority, where the city is actually making decisions about who can live where and how much they're going to pay. This has ruined cities, absolutely ruined cities, when, when the city actually gets into the housing business. So I think we can protect that by doing more technology development, less building.
Okay, very good. This question came, by the way, you can post your questions in a little bit. I will also post under comments the link to join our Zoom session live. The last question before our next segment came in from Jamie Diamond. She asked, how do you plan, how do you plan to engage minority-owned businesses? It's from Jamie Diamond. How do you plan to engage minority-owned businesses? And we'll start with Natalia.
So first and foremost, in order to engage minority-owned businesses, we need to make sure that we're making an effort to go into their businesses and talk to the business owners. I think that through that and through building a relationship and rapport through our business owners, we can start talking about certain solutions, or start talking about their problems and start developing solutions to ensure that their businesses continue to succeed. The other thing that I'd like to see is to see more Latinos coming into city council and saying public comment and talking about some of their issues and their concerns. And so those are the things that I would like to work on and continue to educate all of our underrepresented populations in our community and our youth to start utilizing that platform to go into city council meetings and start sharing their concerns.
Thank you Natalia. Same question to Mark McIntyre. How do you plan to engage minority-owned businesses?
One of my favorite minority-owned businesses here in Carpenteria is Tyler's Donuts. I go there every day. I buy one lottery ticket because it's a lot cheaper to lose money than going to Las Vegas. And I don't like to drive to Las Vegas. So I lose my money there at Tyler's Donuts. And I engage with Doribella and her daughter Jessica and their son Enrique, and we talk about developing their business. And they told me, it's a two-way street. It's really interesting that the minority businesses that are successful, they're there at city council. They have the ear of council, they have the ear of staff. But the minority businesses that are floundering, they don't seem to be interested in, in pulling their fair share of engagement. Engagement is a two-way street. It's not just the city reaching out and reaching out to, to, to appease people who feel aggrieved or marginalized or divided from the community. And if, if council members have a, a, a philosophy that they want to appeal to all people, all people, not just some. Thank you.
Okay, very good. And Wade, how would you answer that question?
Actually, I'm very sensitive about this issue, mainly because I'm Japanese-American descent and my family was interned during World War II, having all their possessions taken away from them. So I see this as a way to make sure that we continue to have balance within our community. We have to look at inclusion, inclusion of everybody, and making sure that everybody's voice is heard, even in the business sector. With the Economic Recovery Team Committee that we've put together, we have now have representation in each of those, along with the communications. We have representation that reaches out into the Hispanic community. That's 48.7% of our population here in Carpenteria, so it's important to realize that. The one item I did do when I was on city council also was to make sure that all of the postings, all of the information now goes out in English and in Spanish. And that was part of the way that we can include them, because communication is a key factor in making sure that we hear everybody. There is another consideration, and that would be something that hasn't really been approached yet that I know of, and that is creating a Hispanic chamber. I think we need that because we want to make sure that representation is heard from everybody, not just a group of people, but having their voice heard equally as with everybody else. So business owners out there, they need to work with the city council to make sure that everything comes together that way. It's an important movement forward. Thank you, Larry. Good question.
Okay, thank you. Now we're gonna have a discussion segment. This will be an unstructured conversation where candidates will have an opportunity to ask questions of each other and/or reflect on the issues. Please do not monopolize the conversation. And it's an opportunity to see how candidates might interact with each other during a council meeting. So why don't you go ahead, and anybody can, all of you can turn on your mics now. I'll mute my mic.
You may have to kick this thing off, Larry. If you want to beat the silence.
Well Wade, why, why don't you pose a question to somebody?
I knew that was gonna happen. Natalia, question for you. What will you bring to the council? And what do you think the benefits are of being on the council in achieving what you see with the community?
Yeah, absolutely. In terms of what I feel like I would bring to the council as a woman, as, as you mentioned, 48% of our population is Hispanic or Latino, and then 50% of our population are women. We currently don't have that on our current council, and we don't see that on our dais. And so with that comes different perspectives that I feel like just haven't been taken into consideration. And so that's really what I would bring, with the ultimate goal of really amplifying our minority voices. And one of the things that was shared, and I think it's really important to clarify this, is that it's so much more than just a two-way street with engagement. Because when we're talking about minority populations, they're also working through fear. They're working through fear of our police, fear of government. And so that's why it's incredibly important to have representation on that dais.
Thank you.
So let me, can I ask Natalia a question? Do you subscribe to the Marxist premise of cultural race theory that claims that America is a racist nation? And is that the basis for your, your pushing, dividing us into Hispanics and non-Hispanics?
So I actually think, Mark, when it comes to this discussion about race in our community, it's important to really put into perspective the reality of what people are living through and their perspectives. And so I'm not seeing this as being divisive. What I'm seeing is talking and bringing up to the table what a lot of our community members are feeling and seeing. And I think what this does is, especially with Resolution 5981, is that it puts this discussion on the table. It allows us to collaborate more with our sheriff's department. And as, it allows us to start looking at our policies and start developing anti-racist policies. So I definitely do not see this as divisive in any way, shape, or form.
But do you agree with the statement of critical theory, race theory, that America is a racist society?
Can you explain, can you talk a little bit more about that, Mark?
Yeah, according to, in 1972, the, the, the whole school of thought, critical, it's called critical race theory. And it was predicated on the idea that America is a racist society, and that all white people have to do penance for the past abuses of racism, despite the fact that there are no races in, in human biology, which is really strange. I, when I taught philosophy, I used to assign papers to have students look up whether or not there are any races in human biology. And low and behold, they're on it. It's a human construct, and it arises out of Marxist theory. So why divide people and say, oh, these people are marginalized, they're underrepresented? It's their responsibility to get involved in government. It's not government's responsibility to make sure that everybody has the same outcome, which is seen to be what, what is behind all of this race, critical race theory, is to make sure that everybody gets, gets the same outcome, rather than everybody gets the same opportunity.
So I would have to disagree with you, but in order to ensure that we really maximize all of our time, I have a question for you, Mark. So in reviewing your Facebook posts and your social media, what I've seen and what I've heard from residents is that they've built a certain type of distrust when it comes to the things that you've posted. So should you be elected, I'd be curious to know if, one, you feel as though that to be true? And two, how would you mediate that with residents in the community?
Well, if I can answer, I want to monopolize this conversation here, but, but to answer that, for 23 years I taught philosophy at City College, rave reviews, my mother could have written the recommendations. But all of a sudden, culture, race, theory caught up with me, and they didn't like my Facebook posting, just as you just did right now. By what right do people have to say, oh, if, if you post X and Y and Z on Facebook, you're not qualified to sit on city council? And also, they're not specific about it. When I asked my department chairman to produce the Facebook posting that he objected to, he said, well, they're in my car. I can't get them cleared right now. It's just, you know, we're using this race business as a weapon against people, to divide people. And I just think it's horrible. I think it's just, it's, it's very unfortunate.
Okay. Well, we have a couple of questions that have come in. I'm gonna now go to those. Let's see. Debbie Murphy asks the question, says, more, more and more housing is being purchased by people who only vacation here and often leave the property unoccupied, making it harder for locals to live here. What do you suggest if anything we do? And let's see, first will be Mark McIntyre on that, and you'll get 90 seconds.
What, what should we do? Market forces will determine the economy of housing. I'll repeat that. Market forces left alone will determine the housing market. When cities try to control and engineer the housing market, it's a failure. I grew up in Boston. The worst thing that ever happened to Boston was the Boston Housing Authority, where the housing authority, the city, tried to balance out low income with middle income with high income. This is gonna be a disaster. Why? Because human beings with biases and prejudices of their own are gonna be voting on this. So I would let the market forces determine the outcome. If people can afford to buy an expensive piece of property at a beach, they should be able to do that. If they can't afford it, well, they can't afford it. They have to try harder. They have to make more money so that they can buy, if that's what they want to do. I don't see where, everybody has to have the same outcome. We all can't have beachfront property in Carpenteria on Rinkas. It can't happen.
And next up is Wade Namora.
Same question there, Larry?
Yeah, same question.
Thank you. Actually, what the city council has been doing, we've been looking at that. And one of the areas we looked at was the short-term rental. And in doing so, we decided that it would be best and most fair for us to actually issue out licenses, specific number of licenses not to exceed a certain percentage of that one. So a little bit less than 300, I believe, of these licenses out for short-term rentals. The rest of it has to remain in housing, affordable housing, or housing in that type. We are looking at now streamlining the accessory dwelling unit, moving more housing into that direction. We have also looked at the condominiums and seeing that we could now convert some apartments into modified versions of a condominium complex. This will also open up quite a bit of housing for us itself. These are all things that we're taking a look at, trying to meet the state's mandate for housing itself. And I think it's important that we look at thinking outside of the box, which is inclusive of maybe having to change some policies that we have set in place right now. We do also have to take a look at some of the impacts, whether it be infrastructure, parking, traffic, all of the above. These all play an important role in how we have to address these. So it's a balancing act, but I think we're moving in the right direction right now. Thank you. And Debbie, good question, because I realize that you're in short-term also. Thanks.
Okay, now we're gonna go to Natalia, the same question. What do you suggest doing about housing, considering that a lot of people from out of town are coming in here and buying property?
Yeah, I think I would definitely follow the city's lead as they're doing right now. Some of the thing, what they do have is their workforce housing programs. I would like to continue to explore to see if we can expand it. And so what those workforce housing programs are doing, should there be another development for more housing, the developer can either pay an additional tax, or they could attribute a certain portion of their development towards workforce housing, which is separate from low-income housing. And so I would continue to follow the city's lead on that, and then of course, I'm an advocate for the ADU units.
Okay, thank you Natalia. I think you've all had an opportunity to answer that question. And now one that came in from online. By the way, I posted under comments a place where you can add, ask your question on Zoom. I may or may not admit you on Zoom in a bit. If you do, pose a question to all the candidates, and don't talk more than 10 seconds, and don't grant stamp with your question. But first, I'm gonna go to one that came in on a comment, on a comment Facebook Live from Gary Copopiano. He asked, with the railroad hotel, what are the benefits and deficits? So what's your thought about a possible railroad hotel by the railroad station? And we'll start with Wade Namora. 90 seconds.
Okay, sounds good. This has been a fairly contentious topic. We're looking at this right now. Originally, the idea of having the hotel there was to try and clean the area up. When I say clean the area up, currently what's sitting there, we have parking, but we also have a public outhouse. People getting off the train, we'll look at that. We'll look at the, the liquor store. So it's not really the prime example of what we want people to take a look at. The hotel may well fit. I'm not saying for sure, because we haven't reviewed it. But there are potentials for income, again, part of the economic recovery rate that we have to take a look at. Also, the greeting of those people walking on and off the trains. I think that's an important part that we have to consider. We do have challenges with that. And again, like I said, I really can't comment more than that because until we hear it at city council, I'm, based on ethics, cannot really comment too much more than that. But there are pros and cons to that, and that's where we have to take a look at and see what's in the best interest of Carpenteria City. Thanks.
Okay, thank you Wade. Next up, same question about the railroad hotel to Natalia. What are your thoughts? And you're, yeah, thank you.
So the railroad hotel, I think it, just like Wade mentioned, it has its pros and it has its cons. When we're talking about pros, immediately I think of the revenue stream that'll bring into our community. However, there has been a lot of residents who have shared their concerns with this railroad hotel. And so in order to make an informed decision on whether or not I would be for or against it, it's important for me to listen to the conceptual review meeting, which would be on the 30th of November, in order to get a really good picture of what the developers are thinking and whether or not it would really be a good fit for our community. Now, at the end of the day, it comes down to what our carpenter, our carpenter residents want. If they don't want the hotel, I don't want the hotel. But I do believe it's important to make an informed decision and to listen to that conceptual review meeting.
Okay, thank you. And Mark McIntyre, same question about the hotel at the railroad station.
Thank you, Larry. Well, this is a prime example of why I'm running for city council. This, this project was doomed at the outset, and why? This project is gonna affect carpentarians for decades, and it was never put out to referendum. It should have been put out to referendum. I had a, an hour and a half meeting with Whit Hollis last week, and he was very generous with his time. And he admitted that the city council and the developers were way out in front of the citizens. Not enough citizen input was, was initially prescribed to get a confidence that this was the project. By the way, there were other bids for other hotels, but yet the city entered into an exclusive negotiating agreement. Very strange, exclusive negotiating agreement with only one vendor. Unbelievable, without the consent of any of the voters. Now, this meeting that Natala, Natalia mentioned about the conceptual review that is scheduled for November 30th, guess what's gonna happen? Yes, public, public, we the people can go and, and, and object, but after we're finished, the city council's gonna adjourn into a private session and vote on it. it in a private session. I don't think people realize that.
Okay. Uh, we have, Ed Fuller has tried to come on to our Zoom session, so I'm going to admit Ed Fuller now and see what he has to say. Stand by, everybody. Keep it under 10 seconds, Ed. And, and I see a photo of you, and not your video yet, but stand by, I think your audio is coming up. Are you there, Ed? Ed just disappeared. I'm not sure what happened. By the way, I did post the, uh, the link. Well, let's see, we do have some other questions that have come in, and, uh, in a moment, we're gonna go to the show and tell segment, but here's a question. What volunteering have you done for the community? And we're gonna start with Natalia, Natalia Alarcon. What volunteering have you done for the community? You have 90 seconds.
Okay, so I've been on the Parents for Elisa board, I'm currently the president, or co-president, and I've been on the board for la, the last four years. And what we've done is increased parent engagement, and we've raised funds for school enrichment activities for all of our students at Elisa School. I've also been actively involved in the Rental Housing Mediation Board, was specific, that specifically deals with housing, um, and it covers the city of Carpinteria. In addition to that, I've volunteered at many local events in our carpenter community, at the Avocado Festival, and so giving back to our community is one of the most important things for me.
Okay. Uh, thank you very much, Natalia. Uh, Mark McIntyre, what volunteering have you done in the community?
Ah, while I was teaching at San Barbara City College, uh, teaching philosophy on critical thinking and writing, I volunteered with a group called Partners in Education. And, uh, living here in Carpinteria, of course, I was assigned to, uh, Carpinteria High School and also Carpinteria Middle School. And what we did in those sessions was, I think there were once, once a month, especially around the end of each semester, or the end of each, each calendar year, uh, we would, uh, go in and we would help students to write a resume, to actually coach them on writing a resume, so they could get a job, a real job in the real world, once they get out of the ivory tower of schooling. Then we also did something else. We actually did, uh, mock interviews, uh, for jobs. So, uh, one of us, one of the, one of our volunteers, we actually, who has experience in, in, in real-world, uh, jobs, real-world careers, uh, would actually be the interviewer, and then the student would be the interviewee. As a result of this, hundreds, hundreds of students have either gone on to successful college and university careers, or they have actually got a job, when they got out of high school, because they knew how to apply for a job, they knew how to write a resume, they knew how to interview. So I stick with that, I stick with that.
Okay, thank you very much. And now Wade, what volunteering have you done for the community?
Uh, that's a tough one. It's a pretty good list. I moved here 1977, got immediately involved with everything that Carpinteria had. I love the city, and as I said before, it's a matter of investing in a place that you really want to call home. So, um, it's a matter of pride in being a member and a resident of Carpinteria. I am the current, uh, foundation chair for the Carpinteria Boys and Girls Club Association. I am the director of the San Barbara Junior Golf Tour. Uh, I volunteered from 1977 to now, um, working with youth in sports as a volunteer coach, or whatever else it takes. You'll see me at just about all of the community events. In the year 2011, I was, um, and my wife, uh, late wife Roxanne, we were named as Carpenterians of the Year, which was a huge honor, and that's based on the volunteerism that we had there. Um, putting that Tamal Park, uh, interpretive player together, we were general chairs of that one, coordinators of that one. Pretty much everything that's happening within the city of Carpinteria, I want to be involved in and invest my time, energy, and resources, because it only makes Carpinteria better. And that's why I've been here since 1977. I plan on, uh, sorry, guys, but I'm probably gonna be buried here too, and it's part of my, what I consider my home. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. Now we're gonna go to another Zoom question live. Marisol Jasso, I hope I, uh, said your name correctly, Marisol, are you there? Coming up, I hope. There, I see a picture, and Marisol, can you hear us? It seems like we're having a problem bringing people on live. Oh, there you are, Marisol.
Yes, I can.
What's your question?
Hi, uh, my name is Marisol Hasso, I'm a CHS alum. I'm a current third year at UCLA, and my question for you all is, how exactly will this committee of community leaders hold police accountable in regards to racial injustice? And will BIPOC and Spanish-speaking folks be included in the conversation? Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. And, uh, so let us go first to Mark McIntyre with that question.
Well, uh, thank you, Marisol, for the question, and, uh, I hope you're enjoying your studies at UCLA. I am fundamentally opposed to defunding the police. In fact, I would like to have a CCTV powered by 5G technology in all of our businesses, so that the police can be observed. I do believe that we should have stricter controls and observance of what police are doing and how they are doing it. That's essential, and we need to answer any of the questions that any citizen, regardless of their ethnicity, regardless of their gender, regardless of any superficial attribute or, or, or quality. We need to do things about policing for everyone, all citizens. So thank you for the question, it's a great one. Thank you.
Okay, Wade Nemora, can you answer that question?
Yeah, Marisol, thank you, uh, for joining us. Great question, and I'm glad you made it through the screening process there, getting online. What I see, uh, community and what we're doing right now currently, we actually, through the city council, have, um, established and developed a committee on racial equity, making sure that we address each and everything. So we're looking at all of the policies set forward, all of the written governance, everything we are looking at. When we get finished with that, we will move it into what's called the Blue Ribbon Committee. That committee would then be the outreach for the, uh, committee itself, where the committee would then have input in the process as you move forward. Now, realizing this, and I've been speaking, um, at a number of events nationally right now, on behalf of this racial equity, and, uh, I could say this, Carpinteria, 48.7% is Hispanic, 0.8% is, um, African-American or Black, 1.1% is Native American, and 2.4% is Asian or Pacific Islander. So if you look at the council, I have no idea how the Asians got on there, but for some reason, they ended up on the council, and I think this is important to note that, um, we need to come up with an idea and a way to get more involvement. Natalia brings forward, um, a good, fresh look on that one. I think having the voice of the 50% of the public is important to have. Thanks, I'm out of time.
Thank you, Wade. Sorry if we didn't give you notice.
No problem.
Uh, Natalia, uh, can you answer that question too, please?
Yes, thank you, Marisol, for your question, and so I think the question that you're posing is a very important one, and it ties directly into the Blue Ribbon Committee with the resolution that I've mentioned. And on that committee, I would absolutely advocate that we have a diverse group of individuals who are looking at all of these policies. Now, I know Mark mentioned defunding the police, but nowhere in that resolution does it say defund. What it does do is collaborate with our sheriff, and I think that's the most important thing, because we're talking about our community Carpinteria, we're not talking about Los Angeles. But what, again, what this resolution does is have more transparency with our Sheriff's Department, and I believe that transparency is a very good, positive thing.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, uh, we have a question from Zoom. Laura Flores is on by, standing by, I'm gonna admit her to the Zoom session, and here comes Laura, and we'll see if we can hear what she has to say. I'm gonna go to this view here. Hello, Laura, uh, can you hear me? Hi.
Yes, hi.
What is, what is your question?
So, hello, I'm Loda, I am a current senior at CHS, and my question is, as a member of our local Latinx community, I'd like to know how you plan on making sure all parts of our community, as Mayor Nemora mentioned, we are diverse and we have diversity, how will you make sure, share all parts of our community are considered and listened to when making decisions?
Thank you, Laura. Uh, let's see, first will be Wade Nemora answering how to make sure everybody is represented in our community, particularly the Latinx.
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much. Uh, again, a very good question, and it's one of those questions where if we had the answer, the whole country would be a better place. I could talk about what's in Carpinteria, though. In Carpinteria, I think it's important that we have a communication channel, that all voices are heard, that we make sure that we have the channels available for everybody. And again, that was one of the reasons why I included, uh, Spanish language and all of the correspondence that we have at city council. Uh, I think that's an important part of it, but it's just the beginning. I've asked to actually meet within the schools, because it's, I think the schools and the younger people, it's the most important. As a child, I did not see discrimination or prejudice until I was in, uh, four years old. When I started school, it was the first time that I realized that I was different from everybody else. That is a place where it should never happen in the schools. So schools, I think we're gonna have to take a lead role in making sure that we create this better equity, this better diversity, and this better inclusion, because that seems to be, and when we talk to a lot of other activists, it's the same thing. It's focused around schools, even though that wasn't the intent of it. So, um, I think by creating a more sound atmosphere in schools and education, by bringing out those points, I think it's an important one. Real quick question, or a real quick point I would like to make, when I was in school, I got 15 seconds, I'll make it fast. I was given detention in junior high school, because I said that my parents were put into an internment camp, which was a camp for the Japanese-American. I was given detention because it never showed up in the history books. That's gotta change.
Interesting. Next up is Natalia, same question from Laura.
So, um, thank you, Loda, for that question. I think it's important to, this topic of inclusion continues to come up, and I do think it's important for the city, which they've already have taken this into account, and they've made great strides when it's come to, um, having information in both in English and Spanish, but I do think we can always take it a step further. So what would it look like if at our city council meetings, we had an interpreter? I don't know, but that, those are avenues to begin to explore and to look at, and I do think our younger population, this has come up, and a lot of these discussions have been brought up to light because they're happening. And I have to praise, uh, the, that younger generation, the group of high school students who are really, um, being brave and vulnerable to start talking about these things and, um, start, so, so, yeah, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we're gonna go to the show and tells, oh, excuse me, Mark, I didn't call on you. Mark, you can answer the same question from Laura.
All right, thank you very much, and thank you, Laura, for asking a great question. Uh, the word equity is, uh, an ambiguous word, it's being used in two different senses. Equity in terms of equal opportunity is one meaning of the word equity. The other meaning of the word equity is the one I object to, that the state can somehow, uh, provide equal outcomes, so that everybody has this, everybody drives the same car, lives in the same house, has the same, uh, income, uh, buys the same food, goes to the same restaurants, gets the same vacations. That's equity that I'm opposed to, and if that's what people mean by equity, well, I'm 100% against that. But I am for equity of opportunity, equal opportunity for everybody. The other thing is that, uh, inclusion is a two-way street. Uh, again, I go back to that. The, the people, uh, this is why I'm, I'm pushing this 5G thing. Now, a lot of people here in town don't have modern computer technology, especially our students, and we have to make sure that they do have, uh, technology so that they can access the city council meetings and the development committee meetings, and all of the committees that, that the city council has. If you can't get there, you can't make your voice heard. And yes, we should have all of the availabilities of bilingualism because of a large population. So I'm certainly, uh, certainly in favor of all of that, and thank you, Laura, for asking that question.
Okay, thank you, Laura. Now we're gonna go, uh, we still may take some other questions from, uh, people from Zoom or the other comments, but we're, now we're gonna go to the show and tell segment. We're gonna start with Natalia. The candidates were informed ahead of time that they'd have up to 90 seconds to share something and show and tell, including a family member if they want. Go ahead, what do you want to share, Natalia?
Yeah, so my immediate family is too big to show and have on camera, so what I'm gonna do is I have a picture, this was of a vacation, when you used to be able to have vacations. So I have my parents there and my siblings, and my family is incredibly important, and I have to share very quickly a story about my dad, and why this is so important in terms of me running, is because since the moment he became a US citizen, he made sure every single voting election, he called me and made sure that I knew exactly where I needed to vote and where. And then, of course, he would go into a conversation of whether or not I voted his way, but the most important thing was that I voted and I actively participated in that, so.
Nice, Natalia. Okay, let's see, next is Mark McIntyre, what do you want to share and show and tell?
Uh, this is an Amicus Curiae brief that I engineered and wrote on behalf of 12, uh, leaders of the Screen Actors Guild, where I was elected to the Screen Actors Guild, and this is a, uh, five-to-three decision that we won in the Supreme Court, that guaranteed that, uh, all workers, regardless of whether they're in a compulsory union state or non-compulsory union state, all workers have the right to protect their compulsory dues from being sent to campaigns, causes, and issues, which they say they have disagreed with in conscience. So I'm very proud of that, this hangs in my bathroom, uh, and, uh, I'm very, very proud of that. The other thing is, uh, I have a, I interviewed Bill, William F. Buckley, uh, the, uh, the, the iconic, that's me over there, and then, of course, when I was an actor, I had the privilege of, uh, performing, uh, at the Kennedy Center with the K-Mute, the court marshal, and there I'm meeting Mr. and Mrs. Marvel Reagan. So, uh, those are the things that I would say, I have one more thing, and that is my students, uh, 48 years ago gave me this plaque, uh, in recognition and acknowledgement for my extraordinary service and concern for student welfare and student outcome. Anyway, so that's all I've got. I don't have any dogs or cats or anything like that, so, thanks very much for asking, Larry.
Okay, and next up, Wade, what would you like to share?
Well, thank you. Uh, first of all, I was gonna share my family, but, um, there, my wife is from Australia, so we need subtitles, which we're not set up to do. What I am most proud of, and I would like to share this, is, um, the life that I've given, my commitment to serving individuals and humanity. The Tamal Interpretive Play Area, I was the general chair with my late wife Roxanne on that one, it was an eight-year commitment to make sure that got done, that people now are enjoying. It started a $128,000 project, it ended up being over a million dollars. It cost the city $128,000, it came from the Rotary Club, so I think that's an important part of it, that's just one small area. Again, one of the other proud moments that I had was being named with my late wife Roxanne as Carpenterians of the Year, and that was in recognition for all of the volunteerism that we did in our lifetime, while we were here in Carpinteria. The last point that I would like to bring, and everybody knows within Carpinteria that I'm an active Rotarian, is the pin I wear. Uh, this pin here is a distinguished service pin. There are only 50 people in the world who are given this pin. Um, it's given to somebody that has done outstanding work in working with humanity and changing the lives, making it better for people around the world. Internationally, um, I've been recognized for that one. The one thing I do want to share with our Carpenterians is that whatever I bring out from around the world, I bring back to Carpinteria. Carpinteria is my home, and I love it here. Thank you.
Thank you, Wade. Uh, okay, we're gonna take a couple more questions and then closing comments, and we have a question coming in on Zoom, uh, from iPad number two. I suppose the person's name's not on it, but please introduce yourself when you come up and ask your brief question. It should be coming around the bend here, I'm gonna put it on gallery view. Can you hear us there on the iPad? We don't hear you there yet. Hello, anybody coming in on the iPad, waiting to get into the Zoom session? Okay, I guess not. Well, then I'm gonna go to another question that came in the comments section, and that is, how will you address, address the needs of undocumented folks in our community? And this is from Sophia Nakasone. And so we'll start with Mark McIntyre. How do, how do you suggest addressing the needs of undocumented people in our community? Go ahead, Mark.
Well, uh, they're here, uh, they've been here for quite a while, in many cases, uh, several generations. And, uh, what we need to do is stop talking about, uh, deporting people, uprooting them, separating them from families, we need to stop talking about that. These are people who are here, they're working, they're contributing to our community, and we need those people. And we, 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 we love those people, because they're part of our community. So that's the, the big So that's the biggest thing I think we should do is to stop talking about anything negative concerning these individuals. The second thing we should do is we should help them. We should have a community service through the council whereby we encourage people to make the transition out of the shadows and into full citizenship. It's very, very important so that they can no longer hide in the shadow, they can participate fully in the civic process, voting, running for office. So these are the things I think we need to do and I really thank the person who asked this question. Great question.
Okay, up next Wade with this question.
The one biggest flaw I see in having undocumented people here is that they cannot get involved. They have to hide, they lurk in the shadows unfortunately and they do not ever become part of a community, which is a tragedy. They should become part of it. We've seen that right now, the federal government says that there's, cannabis is still illegal, yet in the state of California, here it is. We need to look at the same kind of approach to that one, seeing that we may have to go against federal rules to make sure that we have everybody within our community, a part of that community. I think that is the most important part of it. We had somebody come forward before, I believe it was Bob Franco, talking about creating a sanctuary city. The idea was good, the intent was good, ideally it would work well, however, it also put a target on us. And because of that, we as a city council had to move against it. It's more important to have action done within the city itself. I think inclusion is the key component to that one. We need to be inclusive. Thank you.
Thank you, Wade. And Natalia, you can answer the question about undocumented people?
For that question, Sophia. So when it comes to working with undocumented communities and it's important to also, even though we have a large Hispanic population, when we say undocumented community, it can be people from Canada, it can be people from other countries, so we're not just talking about our Hispanic community. But in general, I think that it's really important to work and partner with our nonprofits in our community who can provide services to our undocumented members because what they need for the most part are a lot of the basic needs, food, shelter, clothing and housing. And so by strengthening those relationships, we'll be able to have a stronger reach. And I say that because often with our nonprofit community, they've developed a certain rapport with a lot of our undocumented communities that quite frankly, a lot of city officials may not be able to develop. And so I would absolutely work off of those partnerships.
Thank you Natalia. So everybody had an opportunity to answer that question. One more question. This will go first to Wade. Any thoughts, this came in beforehand through the council view, any thoughts about the cannabis farms in Carpinteria Valley? Would you support a dispensary in our city in order to get additional tax revenue? And we'll start with Wade on there.
Perfect, no, I did get it, thank you Larry. Right now cannabis growing is in the county area and that's one area where we actually have no jurisdiction. However, we've created good influence. In my opinion, we are working well with the organization Carpinteria Growers. They've been a lot more cooperative than we had anticipated in the past and because of that, I see it moving forward in that. The cannabis industry is here to say, it's saved the flower industry, it's saved those greenhouses. So I think with that coming back to us, it'll help us out. As far as dispensaries, I can't comment on that one only because currently we have a ban on that. So as part of the city council, again, ethically, I cannot say one way or another, but thank you.
Okay, Natalia, what is your, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I think that the cannabis industry is here to stay, although it is out of the jurisdiction, the city's jurisdiction. And so one of the things I would like to do is to continue to build a stronger relationship with the board of supervisors to ensure residents feel heard. But when it comes to a dispensary, even before that conversation happens, I'd like to explore what it would look like, to look at manufacturing and testing in our industrial area. So I would probably start there before the dispensary conversation.
Okay, thank you Natalia. And Mark McIntyre, the question about cannabis.
I love this question, I love this question. First of all, yes, I'm in favor of extending the jurisdiction of the city limits so that we do include the cannabis areas. I'm in favor of that. And because of that, we would be, we would be actually taking control of our own Carpinteria destiny. Because right now, our destiny is in the hands of the remote supervisors. So we're sort of like little children and big mommy and big daddy, we have to go and beg for them. Oh, please give us some money from the cannabis. We bear the brunt of the stink to high heaven, but oh, we have to go and beg for their, what is it? They made $6.8 million this year. What was, what was our cut of this? What was, how did Carpinteria benefit? All of us, all people in Carpinteria, how did we benefit? These are tough questions and I think if I'm on city council, I will be right at the heels of the supervisors asking these questions.
Okay, well, thank you very much, everybody. Now we've come to the ending part of our forum and we're going to have closing comments now. Let me see here, each candidate will have up to 90 seconds for a closing statement. And this is a reminder to everybody that you can go to the website, the Facebook page, look at the comments and the candidates can also after the forum, go to the Facebook page and weigh in their thoughts on the different comments that came in on this Facebook page. It will also be available on YouTube. Okay, so we're going to start with Natalia with your closing statement and you have up to 90 seconds. Go ahead Natalia.
Thank you Larry. So I'd like to say thank you to all of our Carpenter residents who are currently on live and who will watch this in the future. And I have to share a little story that since I started my campaign, I truly have fallen in love with Carpinteria so much more. The amount of support I've received and the amount of relationships and friendships that I've developed has been enormous. And in terms of who I am as an individual and as a person and when it comes to making any types of decisions on the council, I want the community to know that I'm always going to do my research and I'm always going to talk to the residents of Carpinteria before making any type of decision. It's important to always make an informed decision and to make a decision that benefits the entire community as a whole. So with that being said, I would truly be honored to be your next city council member and I hope to continue to further conversations with all of the residents in town. Thank you.
Thank you Natalia. Mark McIntyre, what are your closing comments?
Well, my closing comment is going to begin with a tribute to our Hispanic community since they are such a vital part of our community. And I want to address them not in Spanish and not in any dialect of Spanish of any particular country, but I want to address them in the mother tongue of all Hispanic languages and that would be Latin. I studied for the Catholic priesthood, so I've studied Latin for 18 years. So I'm going to give an apostolic blessing right now to all of the Hispanic citizens of Carpinteria. Deus in adjutorium nostrum nomine domine qui facit celum et terram venidi capos omnipotens Deus paten et fili et spiritui santo de shenda de supervos ad manient center sed liber nos amabo et ex nusae. The decision in this campaign and this election is very clear. If you want the city council to continue trying to keep up with special interest clamoring, then don't vote for Mark McIntyre. But if you want city council to go back to making decisions for all people, regardless of what group, what ethnicity, what gender they are, regardless of any other divisive category, then do vote for Mark McIntyre and I'd appreciate your vote. Thank you so much Larry and the producers of this film. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Now we're going to end with Wade Nimura with your closing comments. Wade, go ahead.
Great, thank you very much. I spent 25 years working with the city on the ARB Architectural Review Board and also on the city council. And if you look at 25 years ago to now, you'll see that the city hasn't really changed that much. I like that because this is what I'm striving for, this is what I want to create. Leadership within the community is leadership within the council. The council has to be a cohesive group, they have to work together, they have to have discussions and they have to have outreach that will be within the community because we really don't hear always everything, but we try and do our best to hear as much as we can through public comment. And working together, we achieve a lot more. It's a greater outcome and it's a greater city. I think that's one of the important things we also have to take a look at. I've heard 5G as being one of the key points. I hate to bring this up, but 5G, it'd be great to have, yes, but we have to look at everything. That means that we'll have to have antennas every two, maybe three blocks because of the shorter bandwidth of that one. Also on that, you have the potential, as we've seen, some studies indicate that it affects cell division within the human body and also in animals. So all of these things I would have to take into consideration and account before even taking a look at whether or not to approve that one. I move forward cautiously only because I want to make sure that the decision I make is the best decision for the city of Carpinteria and you, the residents. Thank you very much. Again, great job Larry, Mark and Natalia, thank you very much for joining this group, it's going to be outstanding. Look forward to seeing one of you on the city council.
Well, thank you very much. I want to thank you all you candidates, all the viewers, the people that have participated, also the board of the Alcazar Theater, Mike Lozaro, Karen Graff and others, Tara O'Reilly, our timekeeper and helper, Mark Brickley who's helping out. And so I'm Larry Nimmer and as we go off the air, let me go to gallery view and I'll give an opportunity not to say anything more, but you can wave goodbye to the viewers. Thank you, everybody.